And this is San Diego City special meeting. Today is Thursday, April 1st, the time is 6:33. I called the meeting to order, I called this special meeting to order at 6:30. Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Leo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Minchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Pooh.
Here.
Okay, so we'll start with some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. Please email all public comments on items on tonight's agenda only to cityclerk@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments will be read for up to three minutes each. Comments received after the end of the public comment section will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
So I guess next item is please announce the item for tonight's study.
Thank you, Mayor. Study session on proposed fee adjustments. Presentation will be made by management specialist Julia James.
Does any city council member have factual questions for staff to clarify the report? Or are we gonna wait till the report and yeah, I guess Julia, I guess you can start the report.
Thank you, Mayor Leo. Good evening to you and council and staff. Tonight, we are presenting the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2122, which is a product of the recent fee study performed by our consultant revenue cost specialist, which I will refer to throughout this as RCS. And they are the same firm that we contracted with back in 2016 to conduct a fee study, which was completed but never implemented. That study at the time recommended many fee increases, as most fees have not been adjusted in more than a decade. But as a part of the city's fiscal recovery plan, we have asked RCS to update that study again this fiscal year, which has resulted in proposed fee adjustments that could generate as much as $450,000 in additional revenue to the general fund if it is adopted as presented. We realize that this schedule is very comprehensive and will most likely take some time for you all to read and digest. So the intent of tonight's meeting was simply to provide an overview of the proposed fee changes and answer any questions you may have, but no action is required. We don't expect you to have all your questions formulated tonight. We realize that sometimes this takes a little time to consider and decide how you want to move forward. So we will bring this topic up again at our budget workshop scheduled for April 27, and we will adopt it along with the budget and a public hearing in June. So before we go into the fee study, I'll touch a little bit on how these fees were determined and the process involved. As you're aware, Prop 218 restricts the amount of money that a city can charge for the cost of providing services to the actual cost without any profit. So with the assistance of the consultant, we went through all the fees that were in the city's fee schedule and discussed with each staff member involved what the current fee involved as far as the service provided. We determined the amount of time involved that goes into that task, and we determined the cost of the staff time involved in that process. And all of this information was compiled, put into the database, and that determined the amount of the fee to be charged. A sample of what is in the report, and I did not attach the full report because it's over 400 pages, and it just simply shows the calculations that went into each fee that is included in the schedule. But we did include a two-page sample as attachment A to the staff report, which does show the calculation for one fee, and that is a sample of what the full report consists of. As you will know, when reviewing the proposed fees, there are a number of increases, but there are also some decreases. It's also important to note that some fees we won't charge the full cost of, such as recreation fees or mission playhouse fees, simply because if we were to do so, we would price ourselves right out of the market, and there would be no point in providing the service. Those fees are typically, in most cities, subsidized to a certain degree by the general fund. Most of the fees in this report are intended to recover our costs of providing the services, but of course, the city council has the final determination on whether you want to follow the recommendation or perhaps adjust the fees to something that you feel more comfortable with. And that is something we'll be working on with you in the next couple of months. So tonight, what I will do is simply provide a high-level overview of the fee schedule that's attached in your report. As you see, we have all staff members here who are involved in putting these fees together, and they are prepared to answer any questions you may have. You'll note that all of the major adjustments or new fees are highlighted in yellow to help easily identify them. So with that, if you can turn to attachment B of your report, page one, I'll start by just giving you an overview of the general and administrative fees for the city. There are a couple of new fees being proposed here. One is for a credit card fee, which is commonly referred to in the commercial sector as a convenience fee. So you'll know that banks charge a 3%, roughly a 3% charge whenever someone uses their debit or credit card. The banks charge the city for that cost regardless of whether we recoup it or not. And right now, that fee is costing us over $30,000 a year that we're not recovering by charging. So we are proposing to charge a 2.9% fee on top of any transaction in which a credit card or debit card is used. The other fee in here is the candidate filing fee. This was actually approved back in 2019 when we approved the last fee schedule, but because it required an ordinance approval, we never implemented that because we weren't prepared at the time to have the ordinance approved. So we now have an ordinance written, and if the council chooses to adopt this fee, we will bring the ordinance along with the fee schedule for adoption in June. On page two, you'll note that a couple of more fees in finance are being proposed. One is an alarm permit fee. Currently, the city allows any residence or commercial building to have up to three false alarms without being charged in a year, in a 12-month period. Our police and fire departments spend a great deal of time responding to these false alarm calls. And we are hoping that by charging a permit application fee to have this alarm, it will incentivize people to pay a little more attention and to keep their alarms up to date and prevent them from having more false alarms than they should, or any for that matter. Currently, again, we allow for three. So the idea would be that if a person obtains an alarm permit, they would get the three false alarms free, and then any additional false alarms after the first three would then be charged. It's sort of an insurance policy, and a lot of different cities do this. So we thought we would try it and see if it might deter people from having too many false alarms. The second is a business license renewal fee. Currently, we charge 17% of the licensed tax, but that is simply considered an automation fee, which helps us to offset the cost of our automation for business licenses, our system. And it does not cover the staff time involved in processing a business license renewal. So this is a $20 charge per year for each business renewal. We also have a property damage billing fee. Right now, staff spends a tremendous amount of time if there is a damaged vehicle or some property damage where we have to work with the insurance company to try and get reimbursement for these costs. It can take a tremendous amount of time, which we do charge to the insurance company. That was simply a $25 fee before, so we're proposing to charge the actual amount of time involved when this process takes longer than expected. We also have a number of regulation fees, which mostly show up in the police department, but the tobacco retail license is one that finance department handles. We're simply adjusting that. It's actually going to go down from what we currently charge unless there is a failure to correct the delinquency, and then it would go up from there. And finally, we have a yard and garage sale permit charge of $10. Again, this covers staff time to process the permit, which we are not charging for now, but we are actually issuing permits. Starting with page three, we get into the other departments. And again, I will provide a high-level overview, but the departments themselves are prepared to answer any specific questions you might have. So the first is for community development, the building fees. We have a slight increase to the permit issuance fees this year, as well as some adjustments to the general plan fee and inspection fees. We are currently charging a actual dollar amount. We're proposing to charge whatever the actual staff cost is on any inspections or investigations for noncompliance where it's not part of the building permit process. There are a few new fees involved in community development this year, including a certificate of occupancy fee and a temporary certificate of occupancy fee, as well as some extra plan check inspection costs and charging for an additional card if needed. Moving on to now pages five through eight of the community development building fees are staying the same. These are the mechanical electrical and plumbing fees. These are added on to the permit, and we are not proposing to adjust those at this time. On page nine, you have community development planning and zoning fees. You'll note here that basically every fee in this schedule is being proposed to be adjusted. And again, keep in mind that many of these fees have not been adjusted in well over a decade. So they are behind the times. We're not recouping the full cost of providing this service. Community development staff is aware that some of these fees seem to be increasing pretty significantly and that the council may be a little concerned about that. They recently conducted a survey of other cities in the same area of these fees, and they provided the results of that survey, which is attached to the report in attachment C on the last page. So you'll be able to refer to that to see how our fees compare with other cities. Moving on to page 13, we have community development other fees. This is basically first starting with code enforcement. We just have a couple of new fees for reinspection and tree removal permits. And then we also have our filming fees on this page. And I want to note that we have two options for the city council. The original fee study that was updated included the fees that the city used to charge prior to the adjustment made or the new fees that were adopted by the council last fall. You will recall that staff came to council to revise the fees to incentivize film companies to come in during the COVID period and hopefully generate more filming business in the city. So they were adjusted for that period. So when the city council decides how they want to move forward with these fees, you'll have a choice of either going back to the original fees or to continue on with the current fees that were adopted during the COVID period. And the community development staff is prepared to discuss that further when you come to that section. And then we come on to the next page, 14 and 15 and so on. We have public works fees. You'll notice, again, a lot of adjustments being made. Again, these are just designed to recoup the actual cost, and these fees, once again, have not been updated in a very long time. If we move on to page 18, we have, as I mentioned earlier, we have many regulatory fees that have not been charged, which require a considerable amount of time by the police department to be involved in issuing permits, such as firearms dealers, fortune tellers, game halls, dance permits, et cetera, massage parlors. And we want to make sure that we recoup the police department's cost because it is certainly not their purpose to be sitting around the office all day doing these when they need to be out in the streets. But we did actually reduce the booking fee for misdemeanors slightly. We do increase a few. We have another new fee for miscellaneous police permits and also for DUI responses, which we weren't charging for. And on page 19, you'll notice that the municipal code violations for parking have been increased by $10 each. The last increase was done in 2002, 2003 fiscal year. And so we have proposed the $10 increase, which is consistent with the CPI increase over that past period, almost two decades. Moving on to page 21, we have the fire department fees. And while some are going up, some are actually going down. So that was somewhat of a surprise. But we then have community services fees on page 23. And as I mentioned earlier, we are simply charging fees that we think are palatable to the community. It certainly doesn't recoup all our fees, but as every other city does, we subsidize those costs with general funds to incentivize people to come and participate in our recreation programs. That is a service that cities provide. And the only adjustments, these fees were just actually adopted last April before the start of the summer period. So there are very few fees that are being adjusted here, and those are for private events, as noted on page 25. And then finally, we have the mission playhouse. We have some adjustments in building rental and staff fees, which we hope will help to recoup some of the costs of staff time and perhaps somewhat reduce the subsidy from the general fund for the mission playhouse. And that is a very, very quick overview. But again, staff is here to answer any detailed questions you may have. And again, we will be discussing this again at the budget workshop in a few weeks. So if you're not prepared to ask questions tonight, we will be prepared to answer them in a few weeks. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Julia. And I want to thank Stan, spending, I don't know how many hours of time preparing this report. It's really a lot of stuff to go through. And you know, some of the fees never been increased for the past 20 years. So yeah, I would think it's about time that we adjust those fees. Yeah, so right now, I guess, does any city council member want to say, you know, ask factual question for staff to clarify the report? Anyone? Nope. Okay, I see none. Well, announce the time for public comment on this item is now closed. Chief city clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no public comment for this item.
Okay, no public comments. All right, so this is for a council discussion only, no vote required. Yeah, so I guess, you know, we'll go over the city has completed new fee study. Now it's about time for city council to deliver any comments or concerns you have. Anyone? Councilmember Pooh?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to also echo the mayor's sentiments here and thanking staff for all the work put into this fee study. It is something that is overdue, and so it's definitely worthwhile and timely for us to be engaging in this fee study. In general, you know, I've gone over the staff report and all the various changes in fees. I don't have any problem with any of the proposed changes. Just for discussion, though, when we do look at the survey of planning fees as compared to other cities, it does look like that the proposed new fees would be higher than what our neighboring cities have. But I'm just curious, maybe comment from either staff or council, because what appears to me is that basically these fees in our area are all sort of, all of the cities have sort of fees that are too low in the sense that the fees that are being charged do not even recover the costs of the city in providing those services. Is that an accurate statement or assessment of why it is that some of the other cities in the neighborhood basically have fees that are also, they're even below what we currently have existing? But I will also note for members of the public that the differential is not so great that I think it would actually even, I don't even think it would put us at a competitive disadvantage, per se. Yes, we're talking about, you know, perhaps like a few hundred dollars or $1,000 here and there, but for some kinds of things like conditional use permit for alcohol, for example, you know, that amount of money can be made up pretty fairly readily, I would hope, you know, if the business does well. You know, even one night's revenues might be adequate for that. So I just wanted to see what others' thoughts were about the differential between what our proposed fees would be and what the sort of average of the other cities and also what the, you know, other cities are actually charging.
Good evening, councilmember Pooh and members of the council. I'll start, and certainly if Samantha wants to join me, she can. We did do the survey, and you're absolutely right. In looking at the actual hours that we spent on the variety of items listed on this chart, we really wanted to be fair in looking at full cost recovery. And unfortunately, because our fees have not been reviewed and analyzed in so many years, it's interesting to take a seat back and look at exactly how much time we're spending. And some of these items are taking so much of our time and effort and the back and forth that we do with the applicants, that really at the end of the day, what we're currently charging does not cover anything that we're trying to recover. In addition, I think you're right, in looking at what are some of our neighboring cities are charging, I'm going to venture to say that some of them, their fees may not have more recently been reviewed and updated to include the actual hours they spend on the work they're doing. So we took this task very seriously. However, we are flexible. If council desires to make any changes to any of the fees, we're here to work with council. Our goal is to really to continue doing the work we're doing and try to do as much of a recovery as we possibly can. I'd like to maybe see if Sam wants to add anything on to what I already said.
No, that about covers it. I think the only thing I would add is sometimes the adjustment of the fees would depend on the perception of the increase or maybe the concept of being more business-friendly or what is realistic for a typical homeowner. So there are other factors that are considered when looking at the fees. And so those are items for the council to consider.
One question, if you don't mind, then, is for things that are, say, like the precise plan of design, is that something that would have to be undertaken by a single-family homeowner if they were, say, just remodeling their house? I mean, I shouldn't, probably wouldn't apply for something internal, but let's say they were putting on a new roof. I mean, there's a roofing, you know, separate roofing fee for that. But let's just, I don't know, what it would apply to. Let's say they were redoing their home in a significant way. Because my experience in the past has been that these sort of precise plan of designs really only apply to the larger projects.
Yes, that's correct. In one moment, we do have the time breakdown for each application. I want to be able to find that.
While Samantha's looking for that, I could chime in too. Is one thing when you're comparing to other cities, it's a little tricky because sometimes the process in cities is a little bit different. For instance, in our fees, some of our fees cross over to other departments where in some of the community development fees, we have some of the public work staff involved in part of the process as well. So that B can account both departments' time and involvement in that. Whereas maybe in another city, I don't know, the process may not involve the public works department. And that's And that's not just in the case of community development, but we have a lot of fees where they cross over between one department and another, such as finance and police. So that always has to be taken into consideration when you're comparing to other cities.
Yes, thank you for that, Julia. And if I can add, precise plan of design type projects are defined in the city's zoning code as far as the type and scale of projects that trigger a precise plan of design that goes before the city's design review commission. So typically, they do tend to be larger sized projects. The ones that are not are reviewed at staff level. But whether it be at staff level or with the design commission, there are typically several rounds of reviews that are associated with the project. And also, as mentioned by Julia, oftentimes it may involve other departments to assist in the review as well.
Can you give us and also the, the public that may be watching a sense of what would trigger a precise plan of design and therefore DRC review for, for a single family homeowner? Let's just say, or, or even multifamily. But you know, what, what would trigger something that would require, you know, that type of review?
Um, so for example, I mean, a common one that, that is seen during the public hearing process would be the larger scale commercial development when it is a home. Homes are, DRC applications, precise plans of designs are typically only when they are the larger scale projects. So for example, five thousand square feet commercial building. Sorry about that. I can grab the code book to be exact if you don't mind.
Well, I guess it just hasn't been typical in my experience that single family homes would ever be, I mean, is there, is there a situation where let's say it was a teardown, even a teardown and rebuild, would that be subject to a precise plan of design review?
No, it's not. Okay, now it's coming to me. I apologize. So if you, um, so for a single family homes, it would fall under the, like, the site plan review, whether it be, so it would be on page fifteen. Site plan reviews for small projects or large projects. So for those, those capture the residential projects. And that is one of the fees that is going up a little bit more. But as mentioned, it just has to be with the number of times that a project goes back and forth between our staff. So that would be under service S dash zero, zero, three and zero, zero, four. And so going back to the precise plan of design, again, those are typically seen with the mixed use developments, the larger scale commercial projects, or as, as mentioned, the multi-unit residential development.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other city council have questions or comments? Oh, yeah, councilwoman. Go ahead.
I do wanted to thank staff for this long process. It, it has been long overdue, but I think it's just showing that we're moving forward and we are doing what we, we should be doing, which is making sure that we are charging what it's costing the city. When I was looking at this, you know, my, my concern was that, you know, we're not subsidizing, using taxpayers' money to subsidize certain projects. For example, when it comes to development, you know, I'm very comfortable with the full recovery for fire, police, mission playhouse, public works, city clerk's office. We should be charging what it's costing us. But I, I am more concerned, oh, before, before I start, I'm sorry. I just wanted to remind everyone that the package we got actually has two different numbering schemes. The red is one page and then there's a page number that's in the middle. So it just gets a little confusing. I'm not sure if Julia got the one that had two different page numbers. So just in the future, we can stream that, streamline that. Because I kind of lost you in the beginning. You were saying one page. Then I figured out, oh, she means the middle number, not the, the red number. So, but, but I, I got it, I got it eventually. So just an FYI. But um, what I'm, you know, I too was looking at attachment C, which in red is, I think it's twenty four. Page thirty four, page thirty four. And comparing it to cities, I, I think maybe some of those other numbers from other cities are, are artificial. Maybe they, they just haven't done the update or they just kind of decided to, you know, lowball it or not join with it. But, but I, I do get concerned that if we don't understand the number or the comparisons, and thank you, Julia, for explaining that. If we're not really comparing apples to apples, then maybe this table is not as, as helpful as maybe it could be. Because it, I am concerned, I mean, I know it's just thousands of dollars, but still, when we start comparing, you know, what, what's going on in San Gabriel, because I think on all of them, we're much higher, much higher than all the other cities on an individual level and average. I think there's one or two that we're not. But again, it's just thousands of dollars. So, but I guess for me overall, when it comes to the fee schedule, I'm more focused on businesses and homes. And so on the businesses, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, we continue with being business friendly, that we're not pricing ourselves out of the market. Again, if we're just talking, you know, a thousand here, if, if it's a big developer, it's a million dollar project. It's thousands and thousands of dollars, a hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars here, it doesn't matter. I'm talking about the small businesses. That's where I'm focused on. And, you know, we want good businesses to come to our city, provides job, provides taxes. But we don't want it to be too low either. So I, I know it's, it's a, it's a good, it's a balance. We want the fees to be reasonable. We don't want to start going into our general fund. So, you know, my first question is on the small businesses. Have we, maybe in the future, bring it back, just kind of getting a temperature gauge? I mean, is there, you know, how is this going to impact the businesses who want to come? Or even our existing businesses, are they going to be able to afford these new fees? So I just don't want them to go away because we just kind of did a blanket kind of fee increase. I don't know if it makes sense to stagger it, you know, the, the business that makes X amount of revenue. Maybe the tier system, I don't know, I, just some of the questions I had. And then the homeowners, same thing, you know, we, we want something that's well planned, an attractive addition or improvement. You know, we want our homeowners to make that investment in, 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 in our city, in their property. But some of these fees, is this going to be cost prohibitive for them too? Again, if, if the house is, you know, two million, I guess it doesn't really matter. But if it's a home that may be under eight hundred thousand, a smaller home, we want them to, to make those improvements. Are these fees going to prevent them from doing that? Prevent them from renewing staying? So we're going to go somewhere else because we want, we want to be able to put more of our money. And, and as we're looking at that, you know, I guess we can also compare some of those fees to other cities. Or maybe we get a percentage. You know, full cost recovery is always the best, obviously. But I think kind of sitting back instead of just saying, well, it's just, this is it. You know, this is what the studies show, maybe customizing that so it, it, it fits our community. You know, I, some of these fees, you know, I, I'm not concerned with the ten dollar increases or the, you know, the five dollars here and there. I'm more concerned when it's like exponentially more. And I was trying to look for an example for, but if, if maybe staff could just look at those a little closer. Or maybe you already have a feel for it, you, you know, the, the homeowners, you know, the businesses. You know, how, how do you think this is going to be received? And maybe completely reasonable. I, I don't know. Just when I see some of these fee increases, they, they seem substantial, you know, a thousand dollars more. That's a big shot. Ten dollars, fifteen dollars, twenty dollars. I think everyone's going to be comfortable with that and understand the situation. But, you know, Armin, you have any?
Good evening, councilmember. I'll start and, and, and Dom can join me as well. So that's actually exactly the same thought we had, hence the reason why we surveyed our neighboring cities. And again, we don't know exactly where and how they are in their fee study. When we looked at the fees and we discussed it with the city manager, we wanted to have something for the council to look at. So we do have that option where if we want to do a hundred percent cost recovery, we know what those numbers need to be. However, council does have that opportunity, that option. Should you wish to not go to that hundred percent recovery, we can certainly do that as well. And that's exactly some of the thought that staff put into it. Because as we started to think about post pandemic, things are reopening. We are still wanting to continue to be business friendly. We still want to continue working with all of our applicants. How far do we want that to go? And ultimately, that is a council decision. I think for staff, our concern is to make sure that we still have our fiduciary responsibility to our community, that we are continuing the work that we do. But does council have that opportunity to not go to a hundred percent on some of these items? Absolutely. And I think that's where we were coming from. We wanted you to see if we look at kind of the San Gabriel Valley region, some of our neighbors. What are, I mean, there are a few line items where if you look at it from where we're charging now to what that new amount would be if we went a hundred percent cost recovery, it is significant. Do we think that there might be some folks who may be concerned? Probably because it's a, it's a huge cost differential from where we are now to wherever we can possibly be. So I, I think ultimately it, it will be council's direction if you want us to go to that place. I think as far as setting it, I, I think earlier, councilmember, you mentioned maybe we do a certain threshold and we go to another threshold. I'm not so sure from a processing perspective, that would be something we would want to do. I think we have this unique chance to look at these numbers and come up with the number. We can certainly do a little bit more analyzing if we need to. But we can go to a place where we're not on kind of the, we're not on the higher end of the spectrum. Maybe we could be somewhere where it's a little bit more in the middle. Dom, did you want to add anything to what I said, or Sam?
Yes, thank you so much, Armin. I just wanted to chime in and reiterate that we have been over the last year really being business friendly with our ten point plan programming. So we're looking at this at, during a different time as well, where we've waived or reduced a lot of the, or all of the fees related to COVID nineteen. And that two weeks ago, council gave us the direction to go ahead and establish a business assistance fund. We've had a number of businesses inquire about that, giving our businesses a little bit of a reprieve where we're able to subsidize their business license fees before we even look at any increases for the years to come. So I'd like to offer that up, that there, there has been interest in that kind of reprieve and assistance for them to continue to stay open during this time.
Samantha, did you have anything?
Um, well, I would add that staff can definitely take a look a little bit more at each of the fee. Again, what is presented before the city council this evening is at one hundred percent. Once that starts looking into each individual service application, then that percentage would vary and it would mean that the city would be subsidizing those costs. So based on the city council's feedback and direction, staff can definitely take a look at those.
Well, I, I think, I mean, the easy answer is just so full recovery and that's all. I'm just asking that maybe there might be certain areas, and just in the economic development department, and that's where I'm focused on, you know, maybe there are some areas that we may want to reconsider. That's all. And I'm asking that when you come back, there's certain areas that you think that maybe could be staggered. Maybe the shock value could be a little limited, maybe get to that seventy five percent. And then I, my understanding is that we should be reviewing these fees every three years. Is that correct? Did I get that correct? I thought it read somewhere that, you know, maybe we do that additional twenty five percent. But at the same time, it, it's just a balance. It, it's just trying to achieve that balance. I don't have any solutions. I'm just trying to throw that out for, for consideration. So those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilwoman. Any other city council member have comments? Okay, I see councilmember Ding, raise your hand.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's thanks to staff to do the hard work to review the, the, this, the, the city fee. The, first of all, I just want to know, for review the city fee. So we have the, is it, we have the some consistent plan every like maybe three years, five years would be review that? We already have this kind of plan?
Thank you, Councilman Ding. We have not done that in the past, but that is our plan going forward is every three to five years that we would be bringing an updated fee study back to you.
Okay, that's great. That's good. So, yeah, because the, every year, like maybe like labor costs, material costs, everything is going up, the inflation rate, so we, yeah, we should be increase the reasonable amount for our, any like city fee. And, and I think most should be like, like maybe ten dollar, twenty dollars. I, I don't think it's a really like hurt people, right? It's, it's for the, I just pages, it's a red one, thirty four. It's interesting. So we raised the fee almost like average, some, a lot of fee, I, most of it's, it's high net. Average like a hundred or two hundred, the, the percent more. That's also the most, it's like, maybe like, also like for my feel, it's like business related, especially for the side plan view and previously AD, ADU, some room addition. It's a hundred seventy, seventy dollars and averages is seven hundred fourteen. But we increased it, it's one thousand four hundred, ten dollars. So that's a significant increase, like an increase like more than like eighty. Yeah, how, I, I, I have to call it, it's eight hundred percent, something like that, okay? To, to higher. So is there any way we can like use the average, maybe, maybe not the accurate? I, I, I understand that the staff already explained that maybe the city is not accurate. But at least to use their reference, maybe just for the reasonable increase for their kind of fee. So just do the study, not like a, yeah, it's for the taxpayer money. We need to increase a hundred percent. That's good. But the reality maybe, or we, 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 I suggest like maybe little by little, maybe for the long run or maybe this year, how it's percentage, you know, based on percentage or based on dollar amount, maybe next three years or next five years, maybe every year, just a little by little increase. Yeah. Otherwise, I think maybe people, because we, we, we want to like affordable housing. So in, in, especially for the ADU, it's encourage the people have the like ADU for the more housing for our city, right? So, yeah, at least at this fee, we have to increase the carefully. Yeah, and the rest of us are a lot of, yeah, it's, it's a significant increase. So, yeah, that's my suggestion, just a little by little reality to don't jump too much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ding. Councilmember Harrington, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I, I, I think I'm okay. I, I see a lot of the increases. I just wanted to go through a little bit and I think I'll reserve my comments. Sometimes I make offline to the individual departments. But yeah, I, I do appreciate the staff preparing this. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I feel the same way, you know, even though we're pretty busy with the planning. However, I think we still have to keep our city as business friendly. And one of the things that I remember And one of the things that I remember, well, I guess it's council member Ding mentioned, you know, regarding ADU, we between the year eighteen and twenty, we have about a hundred applicants for room addition or ADU and yeah, state law, I believe they're already passed, you know, they want to encourage our residents to build ADU or junior ADU. So the city is supposed to have some kind of string line process and and I guess we should keep the fees low, but now it's like from hundred and seventy dollars to fourteen hundred and ten dollars. Yeah, almost ten times. Another one is the second story addition. You know, three hundred and thirty five dollars to almost thirty five hundred dollars. That's another one is ten times more than we used to ask for. So that's that's pretty a big jump and I just have concern with that. Other than that, I think it's okay. You know, another item, maybe the conditional use permit. That's increase from seventeen fifty to thirty six seventy, that's almost double. But compared to other cities, I think we're all the very high end. Yeah, so I I I think we should, yeah, just take a look at this chart again, especially this one. The planning fees. And because we want to, you know, a pretty comparable with other cities. And right now we have what, seven cities, Arcadia, South Pasadena, Monterrey Park, Roseme, Temple City, El Hembra and San Marino. And so we covered pretty much, you know, our neighboring cities already, but we're yeah, we're way high than all of them. So I think we want to increase our fees, but I think not not this much. So hopefully, the staff can bring it back and, you know, we'll discuss again. And, yeah, because I I, well, like I said, and some of those fees, you know, you increase ten dollars, twenty dollars and that's fine. And also we haven't done that for the past twenty years, and so it's about time to adjust those fees, but the these, you know, planning fees is 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 quite a big jump. So and and and, you know, again, we we want to keep our residents that that, you know, that they think they can do good job in our city, for instance, they want to remodel their home, they want to build additional units or or ADU. And I think we should encourage them because at this time, there's housing shortage, you know, and we're talking about how to prevent, you know, homeless population. As a matter of fact, I think to LA along the homeless population has increased quite a bit and we can have this type of low cost living units, you know, and and can provide more housings for low income family or students or, you know, or seniors. So, yeah, so I I I think it's, you know, it's a good report, it's very detailed, but I however, I think the the attachment C all the city council probably majority of have the same concerns that we should take a second look at these. So I guess, you know, the, is there a recommendation for this action?
There's not a recommendation. So we've heard all of the deliberation from council and when we come back on the twenty seventh for our next budget. Yeah, we'll look at those fees that we talked about and staff will have a proposal for council to consider for specifically for those on page thirty four.
Okay. Well, this is a very short meeting and because it's a special meeting, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting till the next regular city council meeting where we held on Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty one at six thirty PM. So meetings adjourn. Good night, everyone.